This is the Cochise County Board of Supervisors Work Session, Thursday, January 2nd, 2025, and it is now 1:00 p.m. Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, 1415 Melody Lane Building, G Bisbee, Arizona. Pursuant to A R S 431.02H, the public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Roll call District One Crosby is here. District Two.
Kathleen is here.
District Three Antonori is here. And we have a full board today. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via a Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or via phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 405509959. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. So we have the Board of Supervisors that is brand new. We have Mr. Joe Case. We have Ms. Sharon Gilman at the table here. Would anybody like to move on? I don't think. And we'll have.
I'll make a motion to begin Item One.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. So that we're going to have a discussion of possible direction regarding the County Committee Appointments for Members of the Board of Supervisors and Executive Staff. Ms. Gilman, would you care to present to us today?
Yes, thank you. Vice Chairman Crosby, this is a discussion that I want to have with the full board. At the beginning of the fiscal year, the previous Board of Supervisors determined which members of the Board and staff would be on various committees based on I G As and resolutions, and just some of them are committees and commissions at the state level that we've just participated in over the course of time allows you access to different officials and different policy information. So this, now that we have two new board members, we need to replace the outgoing board members on these committees. The fees related to them or any membership dues was already paid at the beginning of the fiscal year. So this would be a six-month appointment, and the board can also revisit this again as we go through the year. If you want to change things, what you learn about them, if it's of interest to you, et cetera, we can always have that discussion. But this is, the bills have been paid, so we would like to have a member in the seat.
Question.
Yeah.
Is it a single member of the board, or can we decide on multiple? For example, here where it says Arizona Town Hall had Ann English. I suppose myself and Ms. Donnys want to both be on that. Would we, could we both be put on?
You could both be put on that. She was the only member at the time who was interested in being a member. It was an individual membership.
Gotcha. So we, so to my understanding, then we paid for each member in the tent?
On that one, yeah.
Oh, okay. That mine.
They all have their little different qualities to them. So some are on an I G A, some are an M O U, some are just something that the past board member was interested in. So we can go through them one by one if you like.
Yeah, let's do.
Okay, so the first one is the Arizona Association of Counties, also known as ACO. That's a statewide membership. You're all already members, so there's really nothing to do there. We'll just submit your names. Arizona Border and Counties Coalition. This is a coalition with Pima, Yuma, Santa Cruz County, and forgetting one, I'm sure, and Cochise County. We meet in Pima County, sometimes remotely, sometimes in person on a monthly to bimonthly basis. They focus on economic development for those counties along the border. In the past, they took on a more border security focus when we had migrant situation happening here, and they helped facilitate that partnership between Cochise County and Pima County for the blessing. So they, since that situation has lessened from that perspective, they are turning their attention again towards economic development along the border. So that's a dues payment, and Ann English was our representative for it.
That's a port of, like the Douglas Port of Entry would be.
They did come down and members took a tour of the Douglas Port of Entry, and they're really reshifting their focus towards supporting those efforts. They just emailed us today and was curious who we would pick.
Yeah, it does. Yeah.
You'll be on one? There could be an alternate.
Flexible.
Doesn't matter. I would like to be on it because of the Port of Entry.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, and an alternate for Tom.
Which one? The first one?
Alternate.
The Arizona.
Order Coalition.
Okay, that's fine.
And then we have Arizona City County Managers Association. That's typically just the top-level staff of the county. So I'm on it, and Joe is on it as an alternate. That's still okay. Arizona County's Insurance Pool, that's our insurance provider for the county. The I G A does state that the county administrator will be the representative as appointed by the Board of Supervisors. So in the interim, I place myself on it along with Joe.
I am not happy with A C P, and I would like us to shop for a new insurance provider. And we can talk about that at any time, but you said we've already paid up until the end of the fiscal year.
And so for now, keeping things status quo would be okay with you?
Can we make it so we pay by them? No, we already paid.
We've already paid, yeah.
Okay.
And we can have a future work session.
That's fine.
On that.
So that'll come up in July and.
Actually, no, we need to have that discussion way before that because it's going to be a budgetary impact. So that would have to be February, Marchish.
And we can, I would like to invite the Executive Director of A C P to brief the board on, on their services, if that's appropriate.
Again, the procurement office for the county, do they have the resources to put out for the R F I, a request for making up to various insurance companies and agencies and even to other states?
We could certainly, we'd have to research that quite heavily.
Sources sought. Solicitation sources sought.
Yeah, yeah. Arizona Town Hall, like I mentioned, that's an individual membership if any members are interested. We still have Ann English's remaining six months on it if somebody wants to take that up.
So it's a hundred dollars a year? Is that what it is?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't mind doing it unless somebody else wants to.
Like I said, if you get into it and.
I think these next, I think you got the, I could see why they had Ann on here.
Arizona National Commission.
Right, right, so that would kind of be up your alley as well.
And then Association of Defense Communities, that's traditionally been Supervisor Crosby in the past.
And that's a full 50 per member?
And that's a nationwide organization. Oftentimes, if there's a BRAC, that becomes a more active group. But as of late, I don't think they've been, there've been too many meetings or anything. It's just more of a membership to keep us informed.
Is that something that you're interested in? Correct. It's up my alley.
Okay.
So you have a very deep understanding of the defense industry and of, unfortunately, our friends in D.C.
Yep.
I could take that off your hands and go ahead with that.
Okay, sounds good.
Then we have the Board of Health, which is with our Cochise County Health and Social Services Department. Ann English was on that for many years. They basically are updated by the Health Department on activities related.
Yeah. Yeah. Because of the hospital we have.
Cochise Conservation and Recharge Network, that's an M O U that we have since the last one was renewed in 2023. And Tom Crosby has been on that committee.
Is the M O U restricted to one?
Um, yes, so one representative from each entity.
I don't want to go that direction anymore with that entity so we could do another work session about that Cochise Conservation and Recharge Network.
Sure. So for now, do you want to stay as the person or do you, because we are paid up currently?
This one.
Okay.
On top of what Mr. Crosby just said, I would like to have a work session of something to review and get briefed on all the O G As and M O Us the counties in agreement with. So when we can do that, we can have that.
That be a part of.
A part of it, too.
And it's a, it's a rather large subject. It may take up more time than all of them, so we may split them up into several work sessions.
I think we need a comprehensive review of all those agreements.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Coalition of Arizona New Mexico Counties. Supervisor Judd was previously on that. She requested membership in 2023. It's a group of counties from the eastern, well, Arizona as well as New Mexico, since we have a border. You want to take it?
Yeah, I'll take it. Give me a chance to go do some, I'll cut it up in New Mexico.
Let's see. Correction Officers Retirement Board, the Corp Local Board, Tom previously.
It has been requested that I relinquish that position by some of the others on the board, you know, on that P S P R S and Corp. So I'd be glad to relinquish that to one of my new colleagues.
Do you want to take it, Frank?
I could take it.
Would you like the P S P R S one as well, Frank? Supervisor Antonori, the P S P R S Board, it's now.
Same one.
They're very closely.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Okay.
They're not identical. I mean, they still get reported differently.
Pension made it, right? They're both pensions, true.
Then we have the County Supervisors Association. All three of you are just automatically on that.
A lot of money, a hundred, ten thousand?
It's for the, it's our membership. It covers the, we noted out in the service fees, the ninety-four thousand in service fees and then building maintenance fund and assessments. And then they have some contractual services that they provide through research and policy analysis. So I can, of course, have a work session on that one, too, for them to come and share their information with you.
So, I mean, do we take advantage of all the services?
I think at the legislative session, when that gets started, you'll see the benefit of it. But I, I do understand wanting to take a look at it.
Is going, I just noted that just all the entities that have the words county in a way of Arizona Association of Counties, Counties Coalition, County Association, Defense Communities, and just there's county organizations, just so if you could look at all of those that are basically some kind of county organization and figure out how to, how to make the best and the most of these several memberships that we have.
They all have their own little niche, if you will, so, but that's why I think it's important for the members to get, take those next six months and see if you see any benefit in them.
Well, especially with one of them being a hundred and ten thousand, another being nineteen thousand. So if there's ways to maximize the benefit, I mean, I understood this Arizona Association of Counties, the top one, that is our lobbyists, is that correct?
County Supervisors Association. And Arizona Association of Counties looks at more, looks at all elected offices. County Supervisors Association is more specifically for county supervisors.
Okay, so if we could kind of parse that out and figure out what's what, as far as these several county organizations.
We can do that.
I'd like to do that.
Okay. So I think a work session with C S A and maybe, maybe as well ACO, the Arizona Association of Counties, to break down what each, different have a mission, what their different missions are. Okay. But so related to C S A is the Legislative Policy Committee, and that's where C S A has a weekly meeting every Friday, can be over Zoom or in person in Phoenix, where they go over the different legislative proposals that are being discussed and how they impact counties specifically. And then all the county supervisors, they make a recommendation to the Board of Directors of the C S A, which includes all county supervisors, and as to whether to support or oppose a bill and what they would, what action they would like the organization to take. So they are asking for our representative on the L K C. They'll be starting up here in earnest as the session kicks off.
Maybe we have one.
We can only have one. We do have an item on the agenda where the member representing the board briefs the board on discussions that have occurred.
I'm just wondering how many, how many people related, or how many members of the board related to this County Supervisors Association should we have? I don't, I don't mind if everybody that wants to do it does it, but it seems like maybe I'd be limited to one, one liaison to this, this association, but I don't insist on that, and I'd be glad to have my colleagues input.
Legislative Policy Committee is one member. It's like a committee of C S A.
But would it be, so if our lobbying arm is the Arizona Association, or excuse me, C S A is our lobbying.
For county supervisors.
So what, what is this Legislative Policy Committee? Is that related to?
That is a committee on C S A, that's C S A org.
But I mean, you said, so if they're, they lobby to the state on our behalf. They have to have input from us.
Right, and that's.
So this, this is the meeting that provides our input on various entities of.
And then they, that committee takes their recommendations to the C S A Board of Directors, which is all supervisors.
I could.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I draw that from not at all.
Now, I know Peggy was saying, yeah, this is the Eastern Arizona County Organization. What is that? How is that different than the one that was the Arizona?
The Mexico, New Mexico Commission. Well, it doesn't include New Mexico. These are, there are a lot of networking opportunities that happen through these various groups, and I think that's the kind of soft.
So this is what, this would be all the counties.
Apache, Greenlea, Graham.
Yeah. I thought I had the resolution. I think Nobbo.
Nobbo, yeah.
So they meet in Phoenix in conjunction with the C S A Board of Directors meeting. So if you're up there for that, it's logical that you would then attend their meetings.
And then see what it does, what it does in the meeting.
But that's fifty thousand dollars on top.
Seems like a lot of redundancy here.
But we paid for that until the end of them, until July, right?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Okay. The Emergency Food and Shelter Program Local Board, this is through our emergency services office. They help coordinate this with nonprofits who are seeking aid for food security, just food banks or.
Like maybe farmer's markets, stuff like that?
The week, it funnels through, it's a pass-through essentially. The county receives the money through emergency services, through various grant operations, and then this local board helps determine where the money goes.
So do food banks. I know Douglas has a huge food bank. I don't, we have a food bank in every Tombstone, Bisbee.
I don't know about Tombstone, but in Bisbee.
I know it's a big one.
And Benson. They don't meet often. They are, usually it's annually or so when we have funds to distribute. Okay. And then we have the Wachukah Fifty, which is an I G A. This is the one's a little difficult to explain.
I'm familiar with it.
You're familiar. So we have a lobbyist with, that we paid, the county pays for in conjunction with the city of Sierra Vista to support missions on the fort when it comes to Washington, D.C. So we'd like to have a representative from the board in this discussion. That's your alley again, okay. Going down the list, we're halfway there. National Association of Counties, this is another, this is more of a nationwide group that looks at legislation and promotes counties' interests at the nationwide level. We don't, we just, we pay dues, but there's very little meetings involved on that one. And then we are.
Again, I think.
It seems like it's.
Would you have, you have a supervisor on there, and then you have another elected official to represent the rest of the?
Right, so Kathy Traywick has traditionally, used to be on their ship team. So if there's questions, I'm sure she would be happy to visit with you as well. She can provide more information about what they, what they do. Public Safety, but we already. Public Lands Advisory Committee.
You wanted to? I'll be the operator.
I will, you know, I'd like you guys to let me know about that one, because that's huge for me, too.
That's a, that's a.
You only get one. We only get one. We only get one.
The Board of Supervisors Liaison, too.
You know, we could, see, who's detailed reports back about that.
Or we could go in the parking lot, and somebody could fire the first one, first guy to the end of the parking lot gets the kick. We could do that. I don't know. I'll bow out and let you guys.
Powerball, lottery, something.
But I am, of course, I'm very interested in them.
So they meet what, how many times do they meet?
That I don't know.
So what do we pay them?
I think we don't, we don't pay, I believe that.
We're only allowed one person that's from I G.
Because I think there's a district representative that you appoint as well. Yeah, I'm sure this one, he might have more.
We haven't been years, so you're looking to be on a committee that doesn't meet very often, that's it.
Get more info on what they do, too.
It's, it's primarily if they're like entering, the last time they met, they were looking at their introducing wolves back into the environment, how that affects ranchers and public lands and things like that. So I think if you're interested in, we should probably, whoever gets appointed to it, we should probably talk and more about the Public Land Advisory Committee and see if it's worth continuing. Because like I said, we haven't met in years, and I haven't received a letter from the state or.
They talked about access to public land? Did they talk about utilization, the various leases and business opportunities for public lands, not just the reintroducing of species, which I'm cool with? You know, so.
Yeah, and like the wolves, it was in parts of ranchers, obviously, because they used their lands for, you know. And I would agree with you. I think that committee could be more focused on access to public lands or recreational opportunities and things like that, but that wasn't the focus of it.
Forest lease for, you know, lumber, for cattle grazing, for various other, you know, there's a whole different mining leases, a whole bunch of stuff that could bring business into the county. We got a lot of public lands.
Yeah.
Just done some yesterday.
And there's nothing that exists doing all that right now? You know, like working with the county as far as like even roads that access into the national parks and how, you know, goes from a county to maybe a national forest road and how it can possibly share the expense of that, making it a good road, because, you know, you know, like Middle March Road, a lot of A T Vs, a lot of recreational vehicle.
Talk about Pioneer Canyon Road, how it stops, and then the Forest Service just ignores it from that point on, right?
So we're on their distribution list. They recently were updating a transportation plan in the McNeil area, where we have opportunity to attend one of those meetings. They're few and far between, though.
But I mean, if we wanted to, like, maybe can we discuss about meeting with them? It's when we're new board, and we have maybe some new questions and new interests, or, you know, want to talk to them about developing some new ways in which we're sharing the costs? Can we do that? I mean, is there, what entity can we approach with questions like?
B O N.
Or the Forest Service, or the Department of the Interior comes a lot of tubes.
Yeah, I think in general, the county has a pretty good relationship with all those organizations. And again, getting back to the Public Lands Advisory Committee, how does that, do you want to reorganize that or restructure it?
Oh, no, we're just asking about just, just maybe increasing the interaction more, not organizing it.
Just increasing interaction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can look at some new ways of, you know, developing partnerships.
Yeah. Resource, it's supposed to be for the public, right?
Yeah, I agree.
So we could dive into and get some contacts for, to start those conversations, but for this committee, do.
Why don't you want to be the lead on it?
Who was on the block?
Well, he was District One, it was Pat Hall. I mean, that's literally the last time we met, when Pat Hall was supervisor, so. Yeah, it's been a while, and we haven't really seen a meet, a meet since.
But I mean, do you have federal representation there?
It was basically the representatives on the committee were ranchers in Cochise County.
But there's no guy from the Forest Service, no guy from B L M, Department of the Interior?
Not that I remember. Again, we only met a couple.
There is such a thing as the Natural Resources Conservation District, which is another pooling of representatives from various government organizations, including B L M and Forest Services and state, the state equivalent, fishing game, all that kind of stuff. So now, I don't, Pat Hall used to go to those. I used to go to those, but I haven't seen any notices about them for a while. There was National Resources Conservation District.
Yeah, I don't know how often they're, they're meeting. I used to go to those as well when I was with the county. But they have a separate focus, I think, even though there's a lot of ranchers that are on, that attend those meetings, that's the Natural Resource Conservation. And there's a few.
Seem like almost, almost identical issues because they're worried about water grazing and so on. Access.
Yeah, and those are run by, there's a representative from, on the National Resource Conservation District. I can't recall their, you might remember his.
County, a county?
No, a, a federal government person.
Right.
Who used.
I probably might recognize your name.
Yeah. But they definitely have a different focus than the plaque.
So for now, we'll put Supervisor Antonori on the Public Lands Advisory Committee, but I think making a note that we need to have more discussions about improving our networking with the federal agencies. And. Uh, let's see, so we've talked about P S P R S boards, Southeastern Arizona Contractors Association, this is just a local group, meets in Sierra Vista, networking opportunity for staff to meet with local contractors. And so previously, Rich was on it. We would like Joe to take his place. That's okay. Southeast Arizona Economic Development Group, that's the George Scott in Benson.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to be on that. Oh, good.
It's got to be published anyway.
Yeah, that's cool.
You could be on there, I'm just sure.
C E C A P, that's Southeastern Arizona Community Action Plan, that's in Grandma Greenlee County, Santa Cruz, and Cochise County. It's a nonprofit group that helps. They help with housing assistance and resilience in those areas. They'd like to have a public member on the board, and so Supervisor Judd did that. We have Anita Baca as a staff alternate since it lights out. I don't think they meet very often, as I recall. And.
And where do they meet?
I think up in Stafford.
Shorter drive for me.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
So C COM Southeast Arizona Communications. Previously, by resolution, the board had appointed Sheriff Danos to be the representative on C COM. However, correct. We had a change based on the amendment from last Tuesday that the sheriff is now an ex-officio member and chairman of that board.
Is there a supervisor on there?
There was not a supervisor on there.
So from the I G A that was originally agreed to, who was on that?
That was the sheriff.
No, I mean, for, like, is there a city council member on there from Sierra Vista?
There's city managers.
City managers.
It's all city managers.
It's all administrators.
Yes, and so that's why I filled my name in as interim, but of course.
The only elected official then who will be on that board would be the sheriff.
Correct, representing law enforcement. However, from an administrative standpoint, it does make sense for there to be another voice for the county, which is why we did the amendment for the Board of Supervisors to appoint someone.
Before.
And that person would be a voting.
Before he wasn't talking, right?
He was on there, but he was chair and a voting member. Now he's ex-officio and only votes in a tie. And the county is allowed to have, the Board of Supervisors is allowed to have a representative up there choosing. And again, we will revisit this at the fiscal year, so should you not, should we move forward?
It handles more than law enforcement, right? Fire districts.
Fire district or emergency response.
Just like nine oh, right?
It's our dispatcher, yeah.
And I understand Douglas is not part of the C E C A, right? Because. Because there's backup if something goes wrong, is that correct?
We'll just look at it later. That was it. All right.
Okay.
So now, one more question, so when I called out that we got on, kind of, you know, the eleventh hour, I was told, well, this discussions have happened for years and years on this, and so we know kind of we're supervisors, we know what we're doing and just kind of trust us, which is fine, but I always am suspect to even at the eleventh hour. So can we get updated or have a meeting in which we would have that history, to what happened?
I think we're going to have a lot of work sessions in that regard to bring you a board up to date on decisions of the past and, and the basis for those decisions.
Yeah.
So we would have that meeting with the sheriff as well as our C COM Executive Director, uh, Tammy Joe. And. Uh, so just to go back, I know you said you want to discuss it later, but they will be having meetings coming up here in January. Should I attend those meetings in that role, or would you like to?
No, that's fine, and then you can come back and tell us when.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Uh, C E G O Administrative Committee, this is one that Dan Coxworth is also on, um, it's more of a staff committee related to C E G O projects. And then we have C E G O Executive Committee. Okay, grappling for the executive committee.
That's Southeast Arizona.
Southeast Arizona Government Organizations.
Which is the cities and towns.
Yes. And the C E G O is its own entity.
Yeah.
So, um.
And they deal with precisely.
Row, a lot of road planning, a lot of other.
Is there like two people gonna be on it?
No.
No, okay, well, I'll brief you on that one, so this is like roads, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Sierra Vista M P O, that's similar, that's considered to the comp, this is hard to explain, the, the inter connectedness between C E G O and the Sierra Vista M P O, they're interconnected, and so, yeah.
I wonder, Mr. Coxworth, are you able to give us a brief on the M P O off, off the top of your head with no preparation? If you can, you want to, you can, you don't have to.
Um, so the Sierra Vista M P O, I used to be the administrator of it and helped stand up that organization, it's currently run by Karen Lamerton, who was a transportation planner for the county. It's basically a transportation, a regional transportation planning organization, if you're familiar with PAG or MAG. Sierra Vista M P O is a regional transportation organization for Sierra Vista, which includes portions of the county.
You know, one of my big concerns has always been, we used to have grayhound buses in Cochise County, right? And that's one of the big problems with Douglas is that people, yeah, and they might be able to go busy, but finding a way to get to Tucson, that's horrible. And one constituent, they had to pay five hundred bucks, which meant she didn't eat for a while because she needed to go to Tucson. Is, but this looks like it's just for Sierra Vista, and when you say parts of Cochise County, what parts are it?
It, I guess, it doesn't quite go to Douglas, it mostly, um, it's mostly City of Sierra Vista, that it includes the urbanized area and areas that are likely to become urbanized over the next twenty years. Um, so it was expanded up to Benson. And it, uh, might have gone, I think it's pretty much the San Pedro Valley for the most part, without including the City of Benson, they're not a member jurisdiction. So county's a member jurisdiction, Sierra Vista's a member jurisdiction, and then you have access to federal highways, folks, A D O D folks as being a member of that.
So it's kind of Sierra Vista going up north, like a northern port from Sierra Vista, right? So it doesn't really cover Douglas or Bisbee.
It doesn't go that far, it covers mostly District One, portions of District Three, and actually all three districts, it's, it's, uh.
Well, because District Two has a little bit of service, and that's what you mean.
Yeah, the Hereford area, so it goes always to the river as the eastern boundary. Um, how far north, I think it's the City of Benson, city limits.
So this twenty two, uh, twenty, twenty-three thousand, then, basically, so we're a voice in one way. We just live, you know, I mean, I think it's kind of a very important, between three thousand, we should be getting something out of it. And I mean, I think one of the things that I've always been concerned is why they don't have any really good transportation for some of these rural areas to get to Tucson or Phoenix, besides, um, if anyone's ever taken the shuttles from Douglas, but that's an experience on itself. I mean, I'm glad it's there, but I always don't understand why we can't have something like a grayhound bus or any of these new great, you know, gray charter buses that brought all the immigrants down to Dallas, you know, were pretty nice buses, couldn't like take.
Who sits on it, Dan?
Um, Jackie Watkins sits on it, I used to sit on it, uh, but.
Is it like the, somebody from the Sierra Vista City Council?
Yeah, they have a liaison, she's typically the mayor, I believe. Uh.
I G A, so we have a contribution that we make, the city makes a contribution, what Chica City is and that's one.
What Chica City is now in it, they, when they expanded, I mean, the best way to look at it is C E G O does more than just transportation planning, but wherever the Sierra Vista M P O exists, they take that transportation planning responsibilities away from C E G O. Um, so Douglas, from a transportation planning perspective, is still in C E G O, but they do coordinate, C E G O and the M P O do coordinate.
Maybe you thought on that one, I haven't, you know?
Yeah, I got you, yeah.
Supervisor Crosby. Jackie Watkins is online, if she'd like her to speak to this.
Jackie Watkins, would you care to address us today?
Yeah, so this, the Sierra Vista M P O is just for transportation on the roads, and the county has, Mosin Road Project is within the Sierra Vista M P O, and they're the ones who helped us get the funds for the design of Mosin Road. And so Brad, my staff Brad and Travis, Brad, Brad Simmons, uh, and Travis Fast are the two members from my staff that are on the Sierra Vista M P O.
Uh, does anybody know if she's coming in clearly to the folks in, at home? I mean, it, was, was that, was that audible to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, well, I hope it was.
Basically, you know, federal transportation dollars flow through these organizations when it comes to improving our surface transportation here in Cochise County and the city of.
So we want to make sure the inventory has the federal money to come through to deal with one ninety-one, this would be one of those.
That's in the C E G O area for.
That's your.
That's your on that. So this is just.
Just Sierra Vista up to Benson.
I think.
I'll, I'll do.
I'll do that. Thank you, Dan. Uh, Upper San Pedro Partnership Executive Committee Supervisor Crosby was on that before.
Uh, I don't want to go that direction either personally.
Right. Are you okay with being on it for the next six months?
Okay. You can break the news to her, I think you just did.
And the Advisory Committee Commission is all three supervisors by G P O. Aaron, that's that, is there any group or organization you would like to add to the, at this time?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to taking the red pennies.
Ms. Gilman, you missed L A P C. No, we got, legislative policy will be Supervisor Antonori.
Okay, the next, uh, agenda item is review of agenda items for the upcoming regular Board of Supervisors meeting, and you are ultimately presenter for this, Ms. Gilman.
Thank you Supervisor Crosby. So this is something new we're doing, uh, is having a work session on the draft agenda. We've never done that before, but I think it will be to our benefit to, especially with two new board members, there may be a lot of questions, and we can work through those questions here today, so that on Tuesday, we have an organized, straightforward meeting, that's the goal. Um, and we will continue to tweak this as we need to, as we go along, um, with feedback from the board. So to go over the agenda as it stands right now, we start off the meeting with a presentation by, uh, Paul Correa, our Chief Civil Deputy, he'll be there to discuss open meeting law. So that should go about fifteen or twenty minutes, and then of course the board can ask questions if they need to, so. Um, and then we'll have a presentation acknowledging one of our staff members, Dan Duchan, for a credential that he received, so that'll be short, we'll just ask the board to come down and, uh, have a photo real quick. Then we do the call to public. Now we have the, then we will have the consent items, and typically, these consent items are items of a routine nature that are, um, maybe a, a minor change or just a renewal that's not significant. Um, the demands are on there as well, for operating.
Where's he left, Chair and Vice Chair?
That'll be in that action, yeah.
And we could, we could move that to.
Should we first?
We can move that.
That would be okay with me.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we can move that.
To after, after Mr. Correa's presentation or prior to.
Call to public?
After, after what, Correa's presentation?
Would you like it after call to public?
That would be fine, too.
Yeah. And then, so we'll just do those two action items of Chair and Vice Chair, and then go back to consent, and then go back into. Okay.
I have a comment about the consent agenda, which is if my colleagues or I see an, a item on the consent agenda that you want broken out, you don't want it to be on the consent agenda anymore, you want it voted on separately, then all you got to do is say so. And, uh, usually what I did was I talked to the clerk, and the clerk passed the word to the chair, and the chair said, okay, uh, number three, for instance, is going to be taken off the consent agenda, so if somebody made a, a motion, they say, I, 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 uh, I moved that consent to, uh, agenda items one and two, and four and five, and however many, you know, whichever ones you want to be on the consent agenda, m- make the motion for, for that, and, and, uh, moving the one that you don't want on the consent agenda, agenda item to be voted on separately. So the reason why is because what if you don't consent to one of them, well, then you don't have to vote yes on it, that's, that's the point of that.
Just pulling it off.
Do we, do we have a process where we have, uh, sort of the fiscal impact of all these agenda items, do we, where, where's that at?
So in Agenda Quick, and I would like to set you up with a training for our Agenda Quick system, um.
I mean, I would have access to Agenda Quick?
Yes, when the item is posted, the, there are links to the agenda in the agenda, and some agenda items will have a fiscal impact um, factor and a description within the background information. Not all do, because some don't have a fiscal.
Was, were those links provided when this was put out?
They are open when they're, when it's posted and live, um, the board can have access to those links through Agenda.
What about the public?
Not until it's posted.
Because usually when I see a, this draft, it has the links on it.
Mm-hmm, and that will be tomorrow when they post the final.
I see.
Right now it's a draft, so it's not available like. But it is available to the board like that.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Antonori? Yeah, I, I, I just, uh, I'm used to a different way of doing things, everything, uh, for example, legislatively, when you, when you did a bill, uh, each bill in the bill summary had a fiscal note attached to it, that basically said, if you vote on this, you're basically signing up to spend X dollars. Um, that, that, that also let us know what we were signing up for.
Sure.
So there's typically a slot like that in the Agenda Quick program, and when it's posted with the agenda item or Agenda Quick notations on it, you'll be able to see that, but you can see it way before that just by looking in, in the Agenda Quick program, and it'll say, the, the first thing you look at is, is the, the date of, of January seventh, and then it'll say, uh, who, who's the presenter, what's, what is it roughly? And, and then usually for attachments, it'll have more details on it, especially it'll say fiscal impact, none, fiscal impact, you know, whatever it is. That, that'll be included in the Agenda Quick, uh, presentation.
And I think if the board could maybe provide some direction of what you're looking for on fiscal impact, because I think that's something staff might struggle with, is they don't know if it has if it's in the budget, is it a fiscal impact, or do you just want to make sure?
It is a fiscal, yeah, if we're, if we're signing up for something that has tax dollars going to it, that's a fiscal impact.
Okay. There's no understanding your expectation for that, is it?
Yeah, I mean, just generally, generally it's like, uh, like, uh, let's find something again, I can see.
Are we talking about consent, or we just like?
No, I'm, I, I, I'm just trying to find anything I can use example, I have some, some. I could pop open my Agenda Quick program if you. Okay, so here, you adopting zoning ordinance, right, to rezone, uh, tax parts. All right, so, for, for example, is that, is that, uh, that wouldn't have a fiscal impact either.
So the, the last one on the agenda does have a fiscal impact tied to it for Agenda Quick? Which one is that, is the? The overdose, P T C overdose data to action? Oh, I could bring up the wrong one.
We just done, that's the, um, it's on consent.
Oh.
So it's a grant application that has a change, um, in the budget items related to the grant and not in the budget of the grant overall. So fiscal impacting the items that they are going to be purchasing is different than what the original grant application stated.
Are you talking about one or two?
Uh, seven.
So, okay, if that, that, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, it's kind of.
Find something that doesn't even apply, what I'm getting at is, is the general fund impact, do the taxpayers of this county pay for? That's what I'm looking for. I mean, if it's grant money, then we can make a decision if we want to accept it or not, based on whatever conditions come with the grant. But I'm talking about what are the taxpayers on the hook for, so we vote for something, I just want to make sure everybody knows, including the taxpayers, that by voting for this, county's going to pay X dollars out of the general fund and from the property tax and sales tax, so we generate for the town.
Out of which account and how that fund, money came about.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm looking for.
Okay.
The grant stuff that comes in grants, that's coming from the state or the feds, and the decision there is, do we want to accept that with whatever conditions, or if there aren't any conditions, and then how to apply that? That's a different, that's a whole different story. I just want to make sure how we're impacting our taxpayers.
Yeah, so.
Even though, as I said before, I don't have three wallets, I don't have a federal wallet, a state wallet, and a county wallet, when I pay taxes, generally, even that eighty thousand dollars is my taxes. You know, but that decision has already been made by some other elected official to spend that money, not me. It's just my decision is how to spend it, and whether to accept it or not. See, Ms. Hegel is with us today, and it does seem like we're kind of on item number seven, would you care to, uh, tell us about item number seven?
They're giving us an example, I want to, I have number seven, because what if I wanted to take this off the consent agenda and I.
Okay, table, ready?
Okay.
Okay, so the reason it's being brought to the board today and on consent agendas is because the bottom line amount has not changed, it's still eighty thousand. Um, but we had to put it through as a amendment because we changed some dollar, uh, some budget lines, so we took some money from salary and E R Es, put it into professional services, so that then changed, uh, also the direct line. So we're just moving funding around, but the eighty thousand has been in place for the last several years.
And to change that money around, the grant requires an amendment.
Is there any difference in, uh, personnel that will be hired, retained, or funded by this?
No, in fact, um, we have one person that's funded under that, uh, program, and where it used to be one hundred percent, we've changed that down to eighty percent. So she'll be funded, uh, twenty percent out of another grant.
Okay.
And that's why we decided to shift some money around, put some money into professional services, which allowed us to work with the outside organization to provide prevention curriculum.
Okay, I don't have any more questions from Ms. Hager, does anybody else? Thank you very much.
Uh, one thing, I will be putting the committee assignments on the consent agenda, the adding of that after we meet today, that's okay.
So, for instance, in this, in the consent of one and two, you're relevant, right? That, that is huge, so to get up to date on this, I can ask you all, please.
Right, we can do a work session on it, or you can meet one-on-one with.
I don't know if you guys are interested in that, but that's going to be huge, you know, to have connectivity, to be able to go forward and maybe, right, even with the poetry. So, yeah, it doesn't matter if these guys don't want to do it, I definitely will be.
Sure.
I mean, but, but, but at this point, it's a vote.
Yeah, still like to know what I'm voting for.
You know, I, I got, but I mean, but, but if, if we all are in agreement with it, there's no reason to pull it off consent agenda.
No, but I'm just, I don't want to pull it off, I just want to be able to know when I'm. But, but I'm sure it's, I mean, like, you would say this broadband, maybe it was like ninety percent on the road being completed, is it eighty percent? What would you say?
I think zero. But, so right now, we're waiting on the, so the bead funding's coming out, and the way that's for is to get the contractors in a good position so they could apply for the bead funding.
Okay.
Um, from the N T I A, uh, from the state to, you know, get broadband throughout the county. And so these are a couple of the providers that said, yes, I want to go after that bead funds, and so this is supporting them to say, yes, we want you to come after, you know, the bead funds and, and put internet throughout the county.
So this is just how we're starting from zero to get to the point where we can get.
I wouldn't say zero, but. I wouldn't say zero, but, but yeah, to get those, those, those funds, they haven't been released yet, so.
So, Mr. Casey, are, are items one and two, uh, represented on the Agenda Quick program?
Yeah, yeah.
So she can find further information, like the whole contracts probably.
Yeah, the letters are.
Letters are attached.
Okay. Thank you.
And of course, I'd be happy to sit down and discuss with you as well.
Definitely, so maybe if you're free tomorrow, Monday?
Okay, so that's, any other questions about anything on consent? And then we can move public hearings. We can't discuss today the specific matter that's for a public hearing, because that was publicly noticed for a specific time and place for the board to discuss on Tuesday. So just to prepare the board, typically what happens in a public hearing is the chair, uh, recognizes the staff member complaining and zoning who presents. And then opens the public hearing, any members of the public who are here to talk for or against the agenda item, have the opportunity to come to the microphone, talk. Once that's complete, the chair closes the public hearing and then there's discussion and vote.
Where is this? In, what, whose district is this? This is a district. Um, I mean, I don't know, you know what I'm trying to say, right?
Yeah.
Under which one of our districts does that come under?
But like I said, we can't go too far in discussion.
Yeah.
Free zones and district.
In district two?
Okay, uh, now it comes to my attention that for consistency, uh, it, we, we made a flow chart one time where we said, okay, first, we're going to do the motion first every time. But in this case, we're not going to vote, we're gonna, we're gonna call for a presentation a- after there's a motion and a second. Then a presentation and then any questions? And then close the public hearing, I should have said open the public hearing at some point, say, motion second, open public hearing. Then have a presentation from whoever the presenter is, are there any further questions, anybody, any call the public, any of that kind of stuff about this? Then close the public hearing, any, any comments from, any more comments from, uh, the board? And then call for the vote, and that's just for consistency, so just, just to be consistent, motion first.
So this is how we go to planning and zoning.
Mm-hmm, so, yes, so this is the next.
Do you know what, when they heard this?
I don't off the top of my head, but that will be part of the presentation, so, and it will be attached in the agenda items. I think there's a PowerPoint.
And we do have the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission present with us at this very minute.
Yeah.
That is Kim Dupu.
Alright, any questions on that one? Uh, as we said, we're moving nine and ten up to the front, um, for the chair decision and vice chair decision. Um, then Development Services has a grant application for the airport in Wilcox. If you have any questions with that, of course, Mr. Coxworth is here. Facilities, we have an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Douglas for monitoring of the water at the Busby Douglas International Airport. This is something they've been doing for us since twenty twelve. Um, it's a contract, they've raised the price a little bit per month. And so, but this, we do not have the, uh, expertise or the capacity internally.
Figured out water testing treatment facility down there, so you just send a guy up there to check it once a month or whatever. Is it every day? Is it every day? No, okay.
It's a specialized area of. We have, yes.
Two, two operational.
Two operational. One that's.
One that's, well, there's a, well, that we use and they'll be done.
Does the county make money from the state for the prison?
Yeah, we bill them.
Uh, then, uh, could we pass the cost on down?
Darn right.
Pass the cost on to the customer. And it's the state charging the fee, right, right?
Right, so.
So we do get a little feedback on, on the water, we do sell to the prison, um, and it, well, we'll verify it, but it's supposed to cover full cost for, for operations.
So then we should, make sure we keep as much profit as we can, right?
Let, let the state charge the state, I always say.
Yeah, they just pay their own bill.
Just an idea.
We will look into that.
Okay.
Then we have three human resources policy, uh, two changes, one new policy. Uh, first policy is on traumatic events counseling, these, the draft, the policies are attached in Agenda Quick, so you'll be able to access those. And, uh, the first policy traumatic events counseling, we previously did not have any nine-one-one dispatchers in our employment.
But now we.
But now we do, so we're including that language.
Twenty-two, is that about it?
I'm looking for agenda.
A question was like, since we never had dispatchers that were paying for a part, right, on a payroll, how many are there exactly that are coming on?
Okay, the number that are coming on, we have seven full-time and four part-time. And please forgive me, though there may be a physical in fiscal impact with providing these counseling services, it's unpredictable. Some years we have one or two individuals that do experience a traumatic event.
Dispatcher?
We haven't had dispatchers previously, but this policy also applies to our deputies as well as detention officers.
I can see that.
Constable.
Getting shot at or seeing something splattered all over the side of the road, you could have that, but a dispatcher?
Well, an audit, auditory situation can be rather traumatic. Having previously worked for the city of Busby, I know that, um, we had dispatchers that did experience trauma due.
Or somebody died.
Or other traumatic events, and a traumatic event is defined in dispatch.
And this is just kind of a question, kind of relates, um, Sierra Vista were the ones who actually hired these dispatchers, right? It was under their, their, um, HR policy.
Day, so previously, the human resources function was handled by the city of Sierra Vista.
And would you say the background checks of these dispatchers, which, um, maybe have, maybe service has, uh, uh, more thorough?
I would say, no, we are making sure that individuals that come on with the county continue to have the robust background screening that, um, pretty much the same as, uh, our AZ Post, our.
Would you say it would be the same as the service one?
Definitely, we are maintaining those processes.
So any kind of comments that I've heard that it's not the same, that services is a little bit more robust, especially since you're looking at dispatchers who are looking at like, like warrants, if they might be and stuff like that. It, it, comments have been made to me that they're not, that services stronger than the county, and do you think that that's not true?
I, I would say that that is an inaccurate statement due to the fact we have not done it yet.
We haven't done it yet, so our policy will be.
Our, our process will be the same.
As your business.
Yes, that is correct. It's going to be a very, um,
So you're gonna have to.
Engine background screening.
You're gonna have to do a new background, right? And you're gonna have a new policy for the.
There, it does not require a policy so much as a process. And so we are going to be mirroring that process. And a big part of the process city of Sierra Vista is currently using is, um, Cochise County Sheriff's Office assisting with the background screenings. And the vetting process begins with the application. They have to answer a series of questions and answer them correctly to move forward, even in the first step of the process. Thanks, I appreciate it. But of course, can I answer any other questions for you? Okay, thank you.
And then the other policy, uh, improvement was with leave of absence without pay. We had some inconsistencies in that policy. And we just, uh, made edits to avoid confusion in the future about how leave of absence without pay is applied. Then the employee recognition and awards policy is a new policy as a result of a previous audit. Uh, the auditors have concerns that the county was providing recognition and awards without a, a policy approved by the Board of Supervisors. Um, so we documented what we have been doing, and that's basically the, the policy is the documentation.
Of a comment.
Yeah.
Um, with, uh, regard to leave of absence without pay, I just looked at it and I, and I, uh, I, uh, messaged Ms. Graham, and all I was gonna do was comment that, uh, instructions and policy generally having to do with the authority of the county administrator, we may not have a county administrator. So we're gonna have to figure out, uh, what we're gonna do as far as making a blanket, uh, policy about wherever it says county administrator, we're now gonna assume that it's Board of Supervisors or something like that. So I just wanted to note that, that was paragraph three, so.
Very good, and in processes do change, um, it's easy enough to change policy along with it. Uh, because I, I very much like to make sure that we are accurate in these things. So that would be, uh, topic for down the road.
That's fine, thanks for your move.
Last item is always the state and federal legislation. Of course, this is, this is kind of a placeholder that's there consistently whether the legislation legislate, legislature is in session or not, um, and as you go through the LPC, this would be the time for you to tell the board what the LPC committee has discussed and voted on. Additionally, the county administration provides a report on pending matters to the board, um, kind of open-ended there. Summary per events, each district supervisor has an opportunity to speak about what's going on in your districts, open-ended. Then a suggestion is that we add a, um, heading for future items or work sessions, the board can instruct staff to schedule.
You're gonna do that at the meeting?
We could have, we can have discussion, but we can have, you give that direction, but you'd like to see a future agenda.
Your business items or something like that. So what about, what about like here, can we, can we do that?
We can do that here. If there's something you'd like to add to this agenda.
To that agenda, how about future work sessions?
Yes, and I would also like to have, if you have that ideas of what future work sessions you want, we mentioned some when we were going to the committees. Let me know, and then we can start top, putting that together on a calendar and.
And, and that form is, is this one here?
You can do it either by the form of the one I gave you.
Yeah, the one, okay.
Or you can tell me here.
I know for sure.
If you know.
Comprehensive plan, something that I, I know we're supposed to vote on this by when, by June, May or something, is that the?
When the comprehensive plan need to be voted on?
Uh, probably early summer. We got, yeah, we're still putting it together, it's gonna take some time.
So you're putting it together and you're going, when you say that, so when you had the, the meetings for the public to comment, right? Was the plan already complete or are you taking their suggestions, you're gonna add those suggestions to them?
Yeah.
And so one of my, I, I know, I think it was in December, they said, you guys had received eighty surveys, right, which is definitely not enough. So can we talk maybe, not maybe, let's talk in January about how we can make sure we get this out to the public so that we have good feedback from them, and you know, I, this is one of my, my big kind of concerns because it's a template of what we do, right, for energy, wind, solar, you know, um, and then anything that, as far as what we're gonna do policy on is in this comprehensive plan, right? Renewable resources, energy land, whatever, wildlife, housing, all that stuff, right? So I don't know if you guys have had a little, you know, a good chance to read it, but it's, it's, really you can see where it sets, how we go about doing the next ten years. So I would, I would like to have a work session on that. And I think we all should attend, it's pretty important, that's my belief. So can we do that? Maybe January is kind of cool, but at least by the end of January, beginning of February?
I think it's a good idea with the previous board, we had a kickoff for the, the cop plan. And with two new board members, it's probably a good idea to just do that again.
Uh, can, just the two of us, if you don't want to. So the two of us.
You'll be invited either way.
Yeah, alright, I don't know.
And you're looking for January or February?
I think earlier.
Okay, we'll get it, we'll get it, we'll help paperwork gets cut up.
Yeah, okay, thank you, I appreciate it, thanks.
Alright, so now we're asked to, because I got an ask.
Okay.
So I want to, uh, have a emergency meeting or special meeting, I don't know what you would call it, to discuss the pending Supreme Court, uh, petition to, uh, basically grant petition for review for the Chan's case against the county regarding the, uh, jail district.
So that would sound like it would be a meeting with our county attorney's office.
It needs to be done fast, because I've been told we have until midnight Monday to submit a response to request the thirty-day extension, which is what I think we should do. So that the board, the new board, the new members have time to review that and decide what direction we want to go in. And we need that time to go, go do that. But initially, we need somebody to submit to request a thirty-day extension. But I would like to have a special meeting and then an executive session with the attorney to the board and, uh, the gal, the lady that's in charge of procurement to review the, uh, routine or agreement or the legal agreement with, uh, Craig Morton.
Our outside counsel on that matter?
Yeah. So I want that in there as well. And it needs to be quickly, like Saturday or Monday or tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, but I don't know if you have time to notice that, that's the problem, the open meeting is gonna.
You have to have twenty-four hours.
Yeah, I guess, so, so Saturday or Monday.
Yeah.
Tomorrow in the afternoon, right?
Right, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at.
Can get it out.
I'm looking at our county attorney, uh, representative here Denise Riden, because that, there's. I don't know, I'm trying, can you get our outside counsel and Paul to be in a call?
Oh, we don't need him for that.
The outside counsel?
No, no, we need, we need the, the representative from the county attorney's office. Us and the procurement gal, the lady to, to review the contract agreement.
Okay.
In that meeting, and we need to go to an executive session for that.
Is Paul gonna be available to do that on Monday? That's the challenge. We'll talk about it after the meeting and figure out what we can do.
It, it doesn't have to be just him, does it?
He's been the primary on the matter.
We need our, our attorney to the board in there.
Right.
And then we need, like I said. You want to add anything on that?
No, I mean, it's.
I mean, the heartburn is, what I understand, uh, they're gonna hear this the morning of our first board meeting.
Yeah.
And then after that, if they grant a petition for review, our ability to modify the approach gets limited after that. So we need to let them know there's a new Board of Supervisors and that we have not had an opportunity to review the case. And that the board may or may not change direction after we discuss it with our attorneys and whatnot. So we need to have that opportunity, that thirty days or so to have a review with, at that time, our legal, legal counsel, because we can just direct him.
To file that.
To file the petition, but we want to have, I won't have the discussion without him with us.
Yeah. Without the outside counsel.
Without the outside counsel, yeah, and, and our attorney. County attorney's office, and then of course the, the county.
Okay.
There as well.
I will see what we can get from the county attorney's office.
And then Saturday afternoon or Monday, Monday morning or, because it's gotta be filed by midnight.
Monday.
Yeah, it's gotta be filed by midnight.
So then, so you need to show up here early?
I mean, we could do it by teams, we don't have to come here, we get teams calling, and then you flip the executive session switch.
The best we can do is Monday morning, I think so. Let me, I need to touch base with Paul Crea and see if he can remote in, because he will be traveling, as far as I know.
Or, or remember, I mean, if the county attorney herself wants to hang out, it, it doesn't matter to me, I just think we need a lawyer from Cochise County there.
And that's what we'll have to coordinate.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'll be in here, probably coming around eight or nine.
On Monday, we'll send you a notice by tomorrow evening, as we want to make sure we post it by tomorrow. Okay.
Matt, well, did you catch all that? Do you want to speak to Mr. Antonori to review and solidify that?
I put it in writing, I don't know.
And Ms. Gilman, are you satisfied that you know that all, all that you need to know from Mr. Anton? And Ms. Gilman, are you satisfied that you know that all all that you need to know from Mr. Antonori about that subject?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other i- items for future work session?
Uh, work sessions. Jail district is, it's, we need, we need a work session for that to review and then consider whether or not to have a special meeting on that as well. And that will encompass basically the current contract with the company that, uh, supposed to be doing the planning, I guess.
Chen Plan.
Yeah, then and then, of course, the way that it's currently written, uh, about what you can use the revenue stream and sales tax for, how you spend that revenue.
Um, I also like to re- suggest maybe in February, a work session on on, uh, the rural, our roads, transportation. You know, like this, this.
We do.
You already have one set up?
We do have a, we have quarterly work sessions on, um, highways and on engineering and natural resources, they do quarterly work sessions, I was just gonna look and see when our next one is.
I like to, I think I'd like to.
Might be in February.
The schedule and what roads.
Uh huh, and they do that, they provide your work plan and.
So, uh, when is, would that be like, we talked in April?
No, probably February.
Okay, that's good.
It is in February, yeah.
In February.
Again, one, one other thing, it's not really a work session.
Okay.
Yeah, hey, so, uh, we were on the call yesterday, and there was no audio, no video, and I heard there were technical issues, I want to know what those technical issues were.
So the technical issue is we're in the middle of an upgrade in here, and the cable was unplugged that we were not aware of.
Oh, so what does that, what does that do to the validity of the open meeting law aspect of that?
Uh, we still have min- uh, minutes, Laura still took minutes, and that will still be posted out there, um, on public, the video is not required, uh, that that recording is not required for open meeting. Law, but the minutes will be.
The minutes have to be posted within twenty-four hours.
Is, I had sound and audio. And then it went away. So so the the fact that you're saying that the thing was unplugged, somebody unplugged it in the meeting. Because I had the screen up, and I had audio on, and I could hear, I think it was Melissa, uh, making noise on there, I had open audio, now all of a sudden, poof, it went away. Me, you know, tipple hat, that kind of looked kind of fishy at the timing of that, so I'm curious to know why all of a sudden, you know, that cable became unplugged.
That's new information to me, so I.
Well, because, yeah.
I don't know, but. I did hear, I I had video for a little bit, and then I heard some noise, and so I had my laptop, I had my friend's laptop, and I had my phone to make sure that, you know, one of us would be getting it, and, um, and I heard rattling, and I heard noise, and then I kept on getting muted and muted, and I don't know, I was trying to say, hey, no sound. And they were muting you, muting you.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's just an automatic thing that goes, yeah. Then I had, there were twenty-two people that were on, right, there were twenty-two people on, so I heard from a lot of these people who weren't able to see or hear anything.
Uh huh.
And, um, I I just hope, I don't hope, I think we have to make sure that that doesn't happen, because like at the eleventh hour, it's never good to have something going on that nobody can hear and see.
No, absolutely.
Right, so, um, I just want to make sure that we're dedicated to this not happening again, I don't know, we all have to go around and check all the logs or.
Or you, or you timeout the meeting.
Yeah, and then wait till.
And you wait until you fix the problem, then you turn everything back on.
That's what you normally.
Done that before, work for an hour and a half or something like that.
Yeah, that's what we normally do, didn't realize that there was an issue until the meeting was nearly over, and that's when we realized there was an issue.
But, you know, I was calling, and I was, I was texting, well, you didn't, but Peggy answered, and she was saying, well, we're almost done, I'm like, well. And she goes, and we voted yes, I said, well, that's not the point, you know, I mean, I can, we all knew you guys.
So Joe, do you have somebody that comes up on the Teams call to monitor that? Is there somebody that you just say, somebody from the IT department, say, on every meeting, you sit your butt down here, you log in on Teams, and they are the guys that have the hotline? The IT hotline to say, hey, the Teams feed's dead, shut down the meeting or pause the meeting or recess the meeting until we get this fixed. And then, that way there you have it, instead of having somebody from Portal who's online watching it, have to call front desk and try to get somebody to call it in, which seems to me a little archaic, but, I mean, it would seem that someone should be monitoring that Teams feed during those meetings, the minute, the minute that Team Speed goes down, they, either through, you know, a messaging system or a phone call or whatever, saying, hey, the Team Speed is down, pause the meeting.
Well, adjust the future courtroom.
Okay, alright. That was all I had.
And let me just ask you, so right now, we have a week's time, I, when a new agenda or an item is going to be on the agenda, or would you say we have a two-week notice? I'm just trying to figure out, I, on on how much time I have to be able to make sure I'm, you know, caught up, so that when I vote, I have a good feeling about what I'm voting for, that I have a good knowledge.
Okay, so we post the final agenda on the Friday before a Tuesday meeting.
So that's Saturday.
So that's tomorrow, we'll be.
Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and then, so it's three.
However, you, as a supervisor, do have access to our Agenda Quick system? And sup- I know Supervisor Crosby has taken advantage of this, you go in during the week prior, like this week, you could go in on Monday.
For the next meeting.
This past week, and start looking at items. Now, we are in that timeframe between Monday and Friday of this week, that we're currently in. The clerk's office and myself were looking at these agenda items, fixing language that, because directors put them in, different staff members put them in, and sometimes it's not agenda-specific enough for us, so we're doing some grammatical tweaks, we might be looking at the attachments and providing feedback to strengthen it, or tell them, you know, this needs some work. So that's happened, it's still in draft form, so I just caution you that some things might change from day to day as you look at it.
So in theory, I have, uh, ten days to see what's going to be coming up.
Uh huh.
So I need to definitely get a training on the agenda.
Yeah, once we keep having to, having to remind myself, it's only January second.
I know, but the thing is that I have to go on the.
Yeah, I know, that's the challenge, it's like, well, they'll make big decisions and.
Right, and I don't like to make any kind of decisions on things that I'm aware of.
Absolutely, I understand.
Now, as far as the organization of, um, the county, you know, our org charts, do you feel that that's something that's completely up to date? Or I mean, can we maybe have a work session on?
Yeah, we can do that.
I already, I already mentioned it to our HR person.
Okay.
That I'd like to do a work session, but it's not as urgent as as some of the other stuff is right now, but I I would like to 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 have an opportunity to go through the way the county's organized.
Okay.
And when or not, we're gonna have an administrator, and how will we?
All right, that would be in that.
How you do it, certainly, gonna do a search for that, I think.
Okay, along those lines, are we gonna have a county administrator now, if you kindly pass that to Ms. Goldner, and you can have a copy of it also, and I have this copy, and anybody else who wants a copy of basically the, uh, the resolution for twenty fifteen about a county administrator, that's what I have that I've passed to my colleagues.
Information for a future work session.
Okay, work session, future work, future work session.
Alright. Well, we have gone for an hour and eighteen minutes.
Everybody happy, somewhat, everybody equally unhappy? Good. So, we would like to invite everybody to the oath of office ceremony on Tuesday at nine AM in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, followed by our next meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, January seventh, at twenty twenty-five, at ten AM in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room for a regular board meeting. Thank you, Ms. Gilman and Mr. Casey, for your diligence today. This meeting is adjourned.